We're gonna start on the far side with Mr. Houston for a roll call.
Edward Anderson, school board.
Carrie McCaulclaw, school board.
Andy Nichols, school board.
Scott Rixman, school board.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Russell Lee, superintendent.
So far, rise for pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna jump right in. There's four sets of meeting minutes. Been busy, busy times on the school board and subcommittees. Looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes from March tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March tenth, twenty twenty-one, school board meeting.
Thanks, so you have a second for discussion?
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Thank you, Scott. Any additions, corrections, or comments the board wants to make? Quite a long set of notes, full meeting. I'm gonna, here and now, I'm gonna keep us moving. All in favor of approving the March tenth, uh, school board meeting minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, looking a little bit more over to Carrie Claus and Andy Nichols. Looking for a motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any comment, addition, correction? Okay. All in favor of approving the CIP meeting minutes from March fifteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Ma'am, miss, thank you. Onto your next meeting. Looking for a motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
I'll second.
Carrie, seconds, comments, corrections? Okay. Um, all in favor of approving the CIP minutes from March twenty-fourth, please say aye.
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 Helps that we have excellent note quality. That doesn't always happen to the board, so appreciative of it in moments like this. Uh, motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes, April fifth, two days ago, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve the CIP meeting minutes for April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Sweet, you guys have this down. Any addition, discussion? No, you can give us an update later. All in favor of approving the CIP meeting minutes as written for April fifth, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Uh, agenda review, I have an addition. Uh, to make the agenda for the informational items. I have the Sunapee Parent Teacher Organization update. So I'm gonna read that during the information items. Uh, any additions? Anything the board wants to add? Russ?
Thank you, Russell.
Okay, alright, so just that one add for the SPTO. Uh, public forum in accordance with policy B E D H, with lots of conversations and commentary recently in town. More and more people engaged in the schools and the future of the schools, which is exciting to see, whatever the opinion. Uh, we thought it'd be helpful, Scott's the vice chair, the chair, thought it'd be helpful and healthy to read the core part of the public speaking policy, so that we can all have democracy in action within the rules and everybody has a fair voice. An opportunity just with new faces in the crowd to remind people what the policy is. So do you mind, Scott?
Not at all. So, you know, as Jesse said, I'll stick to kind of the core of the policy, which focuses on the procedures and rules pertaining to public participation at board meetings. Fifteen minutes will be set aside at the beginning and the end of each meeting as public comment period to allow citizens to address the board. The purpose of the board receiving public comment during the limited public comment period is to allow citizens to communicate info or concerns that are within the jurisdiction and authority of the board owner, but not to comment about specific personnel, individual employment, student and/or other matters which are within the primary jurisdiction and authority of the superintendent and/or other administrators in the district. Each individual will be allowed to speak once on a topic. The limitation does not encompass comments regarding the superintendent or the superintendent's performance as that position is directly within the jurisdiction and authority of the board. However, as other members of the school administration office and building administrators are supervised by the superintendent, comments about such personnel must be directed to the superintendent. Speakers will be allotted three minutes per person. Both the three-minute and overall fifteen-minute periods may be extended by a majority vote of the board. The board is not obligated to respond to any public comments. All comments, whether positive or negative, regarding individual employees or personnel other than the superintendent or students will not be permitted and will be directed to the superintendent in accordance with the district's grievance and complaint process set forth in policies K L and K L D. The board also reserves the right to enter into non-public session at any time. The chair or the presiding officer shall decline to receive public comment on any matter which has not been properly addressed through the proper administrative channels, which is reserved for non-public session, which may compromise the duty of the board to provide a third party with a fair hearing or which may compromise the right of an employee, student, or other party to be present or to require that a matter be discussed in the non-public session. The chair or the presiding officer shall terminate the speaking privileges of any individual when they do not adhere to the policies established herein, when the comments are obscene, vulgar, or threaten or incite violence when the comments are non-germane to the business at hand by the board. And that's the core of it.
Is that accounted for? Alright, so in the interest of functional democracy and community, uh, we need to abide by the policy. There was extensive work a few years ago after there was some egregious misuse of the opportunity to hear from the public. So I think, um, some heightened feelings from people coming into this meeting tonight. I just wanted to ground everybody that you'll have three minutes. If you want to refer to a position that is appropriate, an individual name is not appropriate. That's the policy. There's a reason why. Those individuals whose names could be mentioned have rights and our responsibility is to respect them. For the board, when we get to considering the list of proposed teachers, I'm confident you know this, but I just want to be on record reminding all of you. We can talk about the list, but we can't talk about any individuals. If we need to talk about any individuals you have concern, we will go and take a motion and go into non-public to discuss that and then come back and restart the meeting and go forward from that. So I just want to respect all the individuals involved at a time when there is maybe some heightened feelings in our community. So just that we're all on the same page of following the rules and being respectful. Um, so again, for public forum, three minutes to try to give everybody time. Ed Anderson is the timekeeper. When you have thirty seconds left, he'll go like this to respectfully let you know. But when it gets to three minutes, please stop so the next person can speak. Alright? I hope this is a reasonable way to give an overview for everybody. So with that in mind, um, for three minutes to, for the board to hear from the public, do we have, I'm gonna go from this side to that side. Do we have anybody who wants to say anything? It's your opportunity to speak. Is that? Yeah, yeah, we'll work our way across. So go ahead. Please introduce yourself with, you can do it from here, the way they set up the mics, they'll move things around for you. Take your good care.
Okay. If I take my mask down, I'm okay, right?
If you're seated, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. If you're seated, you're spaced properly, you can take your mask down. Uh, as soon as you stand up, we're gonna ask you to go back.
Excellent, thank you. My name's Nicole Bailey. I live at Eighth Beach Street here in Sunapee. I am a triple consumer, taxpayer, teacher, and parent. Um, and I wrote a letter to the board and I wanted to share it with everybody in the room tonight. Um, and it says, Dear Mr. Holden and the Sunapee School Board, it was brought to my attention Monday that Mr. Holden plans to cut back the Sunapee Central Elementary School music teacher position to point six next school year or three days per week versus the current four. He proposes that this is in an effort to eventually grow the music department. While I am aware that sometimes you need to clip a plant or a tree in order to make it grow, I do not believe that the musical education of our elementary students should be clipped now or ever. I once had a conversation with a prior superintendent who greatly shaped who I am. We had just had a heated argument and I admitted to him that I was nervous about asking about expanding or needing things, not wanting to spend money or rock the boat. He put his hand up and said, Nikki, no one else will stand up for your program except for you. If you know it is right for students, argue, fight, and claw. The worst I can say is no. That's why I'm here tonight. Please allow me to explain why I believe this cut to be detrimental to our students. This school year, with the pandemic restrictions, I have been traveling from classroom to classroom, teaching general music and teaching band in small groups in the cafeteria. I have a table that functions as a desk on the stage in the library amongst the storage. I have worked diligently to create an engaging curriculum that gives students a well-rounded musical education with minimal singing, movement, or playing instruments, the very tenants of a music education, a music program. While traditional chorus and band ensembles have not been able to meet, the band program currently has twenty students and was open to both fourth and fifth graders for the first time this year. They currently meet on Thursdays in light instrument groupings for twenty-five minutes each. Next year, the band should be expanding to include beginner band and an advanced band. This would require at least another three hours of time to teach six group lessons for the advanced band, as well as time for an advanced band ensemble. This is nearly adding another full day to the position. Additionally, one of the highlights of my week is working with our students with autism. These private meetings have not only increased the students' musical abilities, but also allows them to express themselves non-verbally. These musical meetings have opened up such growth with social, emotional learning and reading and speaking fluency. I was recently asked by the special education department to expand this offering next year, but now I have to say no. It hurts my heart to think of them missing out on that opportunity. When I asked Mr. Holden how it could possibly fit everything into three days, he said that he had always left scheduling up to the individuals and schools.
Well, it's a lot better for the time, for our time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Hula. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Sunapee Teachers Association in regards to the agenda item about the district-wide nurse. And we just put out a survey to membership to, um, feel, get a feel of where people were at. And this is just union membership. Um, we got twenty-seven responses and ninety-one point seven percent were not in favor of ex, not expanding, but combining to make one nurse. I got a lot of feedback, just to summarize the feelings on that was, um, a school nurse role is, is more than just medical treatment. It includes health records, attendance checks, education in the classroom, so many other things. And when you guys talk about this and make this decision, just please keep in mind like, what impact does this have on students and if this is best for students in the end? So, thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your thoughts.
Uh, my name is Megan Oxland and I live at forty-eight Sleeper Room. Um, I, this week has been crazy for me and it's terribly emotional, but I wanted to speak on the nurses' behalf, um, first. Um, I wanted to point out something that's near and dear and that's the Sunapee EMS. And I think about if we were sharing a nurse, this school from the other schools, point six miles, it's three minutes or a ten-minute walk. It could be the longest of three minutes of safety services life if you cut that. The longest three minutes if there was an emergency. That hits me hard, because that's my dad, that's my husband, and those are my friends. The nurses at both of the schools don't just apply Band-Aids. They apply Band-Aids to hearts. They supply shoes, they supply clothes for students that may not have them. That's something to consider. If you're willing to take them away from them, I guess that's on your conscience. But I know that they, they do more than just apply a Band-Aid. It's not about that. In terms of the music program, um, I think that the music program is a, the arts are concluded in music as well are so, so critical to the growth of a child developmentally in an elementary school setting. The music program helps self-expression where they're growing to fall in love with something. Is it a song? Is it an instrument? If you cut the program, you're taking away the conductor of the orchestra. A piece, the piece that guides them. So where does that put them when they get into the high school setting? Does that cut a piece of their dream? I wouldn't put that on my conscience. Taking a piece away, no way. And I'm sorry for my emotions, but it means a lot. I come from here, my kids grow here, and I will support this community, but I'll support those teachers and staff in those buildings too. Thank you.
Alright, just a second. Public forum, sort of, meeting. Thank you for being here. The goal from this on is to divide and update. Please.
So when I look back, April has been fairly, well, the end of March, beginning of April, it's been fairly busy for us. Um, last month, we did a rainbow reading challenge. Um, if you come into Sunapee Central, you would see rainbow chains all over our school. And each length of the chain represents a time that someone spent, the time in March, when someone spent their time to read. There are chains everywhere. There's in the lobby, there are in the corner, they are in the hallways. There are the rainbow chains everywhere. And it was amazing to see how much reading we did for the month of March. Um, did you notice the other day, we released our sharp observer as their annual event? We're making plans for May assessments, maybe it will become very busy now for us. Um, we're also rethinking of how we're doing our end of the year celebrations. Like I said, at last month, there's lots of traditions that happen in elementary school. And with COVID, we want to keep those traditions, but we're having to rethink how we do them. And one of those traditions has to be a special shout-out to the Sunapee Police. Every year we do the air program. And traditionally, they come in once a week, for ten weeks, they do a program. And this year, we said, we can't do that, because we don't know what's gonna happen over a ten-week period, like we did last year. And so they were so encouraged to reorganize their schedules and think outside the box. And so we did it via Zoom. And so they televised live from the police station. And our students were at Sunapee Elementary for ten days. And I wrote, they had the air program. So again, it's doing what we always do, but just rethinking how we do it. Um, and then the staff is continuing to have conversations about how to improve math instruction. Academics are still going on, how we can do a better job, we do a fantastic job already, but hopefully we do even a better job. So those were very, we're having our conversations right now as a staff. But so April, March, April was pretty busy. And when we get back from the vaccination, month of March, May, today's in the staff meeting, we hit the, our fifth round running for six weeks and there's so much to do. It was amazing that in August, we were having the conversation, oh, can you just make it to November? Can you just make it to Thanksgiving? And now we're like, oh my gosh, we don't have enough time. We have all this stuff that we've got to be done before June. Um, so that's kind of, you said, wow, we're almost there. So that's what's happening in elementary school.
That's great. Thanks for the update. It's amazing for both schools that we really effectively as a district missed one day of school during COVID. Full-time work, unbelievable. Pretty awesome. Alright, middle high school update, please.
Um, you know, very similar to all the things are busy. We're still trying to, um, incorporating in-person with some of the things remote. So as I share some of these things, you're gonna see some of them were in-person, some were remote, and some are kind of a combination of the two. So, you know, we did our screenplay. Um, we were able to livestream, appreciate the work with, uh, the district very much helped with that. Um, we were also able to bring two people in for each person. So we were able to kind of combine those similarly, uh, similar to how we were able to do the end of the winter sports season. Last night, we had a college night for the junior parents. We did that remotely, we had pretty good attendance at that. We're going to do our senior project night next week. We weren't able to do it last year, obviously, nobody was able to. Um, unfortunately, there's, it's a little bit different. We did not quite feel comfortable with the, the gallery walk, so to speak, where everybody gets to come in and to see all the projects. We just felt that doing that, um, because we're so close, we like to say we're close to, uh, to Random Matmore, but we would have too much gathering, so to speak, in the indoor arena. But each senior is going to be able to have six tickets. Um, so they will be able to have six people come in and see their senior project presentation, which will be in-person. So I'm a little bit different, but we're excited to be able to do that. Um, we were able to do an in-person SAT day. So that was in the cafeteria, uh, happened last week. And we also have a new student club. Uh, this is a student-led club, they want to do an economics slash stock market club. They're very, um, engaged with the stock market right now, we'll learn more about it. And Mr. Klingerman has volunteered to assist them with it. I would also like to thank the Policeman's Association, um, donating the pitching machine to the softball program. So we have some indoor, we have some outdoor. Um, we're hoping at the end of the year, come along, we'll be more outdoors than indoor. Of course, we're getting that, it's been, it's been a good year. It's been a different year.
Excellent, thank you. I'm looking forward to senior projects, COVID-style, uh, next Thursday. Great. Alright, uh, superintendent update, please.
Super, thank you. As we're starting out along in the country and also here in the state, we too have experienced a high degree of COVID transmission in Sunapee in the month of March. And so since the beginning of the year, uh, it really has kind of bigger impact on us from March first. Uh, and still continues to have that impact even through today. Uh, we're hoping that will slow down a little bit as we prep for things like junior project prom, graduation, spring sports. But as across the state, as in Sunapee, we've got a rough road. And a lot of it's really affecting more staff than the students, but our numbers are doing different training in the wrong direction for a while. Uh, not even our faculty and staff have their second vaccination coming this Friday in Grand. Uh, people are really excited about that. Again, second shot, uh, second vaccination ten days after, um, from what we're being told, that should make you feel a whole lot better. With the governor giving out legislative order to return kids to school, not having a much of an impact on us directly, essentially we've already been at school. Knowing that's done folks around the, uh, the state and people trying to deal with three feet, six feet, bus rides, all those things that we took on earlier in the year. And, and we got them right, we got them right back in August and will be in place all year and then help us maintain that continuity of education for all our kids. So really exciting to have that. So I think our teachers will feel a little bit safer again coming back to school and knowing they've had their vaccination. I know it's being opened up for kids sixteen and older, uh, I believe it's this Friday throughout the state. Um, and believe it or not, we're working on bringing back to school next year, what that's starting to look like. And so with very little guidance now coming from the state as they continue to open things up, um, how we will look at, how we bring our, all our students hopefully back next year, what we offer, how we offer it, what our classes look like, what our classes look like, what lunches look like. A lot of things that were put in place because of COVID, uh, we're finding out that may have some benefit to us without COVID in place. And one of those specifically is lunch order. But right now, our kids, uh, families come on, they order their lunch ahead of time for the week. That has really been, that really helped the cafeteria be much more efficient, a lot less waste of food, ensuring that kids get what we want, it helps with the ordering. So we're probably gonna keep that system in place because again, it helps us feel all. And lastly, I'm gonna give you a quick presentation, if I can. John, will you do me a favor if you're the closest to this, remove that paper from in front of that? John, John, hold on, I, yeah, well, I was a little confused. Thank you, John, appreciate it. I want to give you a quick, Kelly and I have been talking a lot. Um, one of the things we talked about, typically I'm glad to see this topic people, it was a hot topic this year and a couple different arenas. Uh, and so it's not really a good opportunity for us to do my report to give you an overview. So Kelly, I'll let you start us off.
So at the end of the year, the school year is completed and we have had our audit. We are required to go on to track the end to our expenses, our expenditures and revenues back from prior fiscal year. And through that process, one of the calculations they come out with is our cost per pupil. Um, and how they determine that is they take all of our, okay. Uh, they take all of our expenses and they subtract food service, revenue, sales, transportation, supplemental expenses like vocational schools, tuitions to out-of-school district, out-of-district tuition, excuse me, um, special ed equipment, and summer school. Once they take those, we get a final figure for each of the schools and we divide that by the average daily membership, not our enrollment, but the average daily membership. Um, and that's how they get the calculation for each of the districts or the cost per pupil. And in that number, um, they don't allow us to use the preschool numbers, the actual students, and they only give us point five for kindergarten. However, we have to report all the expenses for them, but we don't get the credit for that student being here, so.
We're gonna, just pause for a second. So Kelly talked about what was included in calculating cost per pupil. And again, we're gonna divide A D M for you in a minute. Um, well, we're gonna capital and net services, that level, working with the D O E. These are the things in regular programming, special educational, other supportive services, and things that get taken out, again, minus food service, minus transportation, minus supplemental expenses, and then divided by the A D M. A D M's very interesting. And this is, I think, where people get really confused on what the A D M is, average daily membership. And so the A D M for a student that stayed in Sunapee for the whole year is one. Is one. Regardless that student is from another district and they attend for tuition, if they come to Sunapee, they count in A D M and they come as one at least their full year. If the student transfers, you see it's counted as a fraction, depending on when that student transfers, they go to another school, in video, let's say they would get point five, we would get a point five. Well, it's really interesting, Kelly just hit on it, what's not included in our A D M? Our preschool numbers. And so I think last year we had sixteen, uh, this year we have thirteen. I think we're predicting over twenty next year. We do not get any A D M for our preschool kids, but those expenses are in our budget and get calculated into the cost per pupil. Also, as Kelly said, kindergarten, kindergarten only counts as a point five. And if they're a full day, only point five. We get those expenses, those teachers, the heat, the electricity, the copies, the books, the books, all gets included in that cost. And so when we look at cost for pupil and you see the numbers and again, you know, these are what's broken down by the profit of education and the profit of revenue. But we look at the average daily membership. Again, these are all students, whether you're tuitioned to Sunapee or not, minus preschool, minus point, or point five kindergarten. We have preschool vocational, so it puts us at that four oh, I believe it's four oh six, if I can see it from here. And it does put our cost per pupil overall at about twenty-six nine, twenty-four one for elementary school, middle school thirty-five, thirty point five, and high school twenty-seven point five. So I know, again, a lot of people said, hey, what are your kids, what are your kids, tuition kids count, no, they don't count. So we just decided to run a little calculation based upon enrollment. So if we just take our enrollment, and this year was that, or last year, because it's always a year behind, with us at four thirty-three, you can see that it drops for the most part in our cost per pupil. So again, A D M isn't all our kids. A D M is an average daily membership, minus kindergarten, minus preschool, so that lowers that number. Right, we have a number of four oh six. We throw our enrollment in, we've been talking about this for a long time, the more kids you add, the lower the cost per pupil goes. And so finally, this is probably a little rough to see, um, but there's a list of schools in their cost per pupil. And just so folks have a better understanding, um, Sunapee here, they're gonna be having And just so folks have a better understanding, Sunapee here, we're gonna be having the numbers up there. Well, the overall, 27 for the elementary school, 22 for the middle school, 26, 25, 6 overall. At Brantum, 21 and 21, they only have an elementary school. Petzberg, 37 for the elementary school, 31 for their high school, their elementary school is K-8. Lebanon's at 26 elementary, 20 middle school, 20, 24 high school. Kirasaj, you see the high school's at 21, I don't read them all three, a school, like Monroe, 27. Profile of a similar size high school, 19.7, 27 for high school. And I threw in our neighboring town, Newport, you see it at 18.4, 17.3, 18.6 is overall 82. So I think this is an opportunity to hopefully better understand cost per pupil, what's in it, what's out of it. And again, give you a little comparison, I know the board has this packet in front of you, so you can see a little better, of other area schools and schools similar size in their cost per pupils.
Yeah, I think, for a comment question, please. I think it was effectively a, that, great if we have tuitioned tuition students, and great if we have Sunapee students, when it comes to the cost per pupil, the state doesn't see a difference. The tuition students aren't segregated at a different value, or if they're a student at Sunapee and they have a daily membership, that's, that's our headcount divided into our expenses. So I hope that's helpful for everybody else who's tuned in during the communications leading up to the election, where there was a lot of talk about the tuition students that wasn't accurate. If they're students in our school, from wherever they're coming from in the morning, that is a student in Sunapee schools. Tuition students, the only difference is that they bring revenue with them, where we have very limited revenue incomes, income streams in Sunapee. Does the board have any questions, clarifications, or comments you want to add? It's a good way to educate the community, so we're more informed and all on the same Anything as a finance guy, Scott? All right. I'm gonna move on to action items, and I want to take some liberty for potential for helping the community, if people haven't been to these meetings, help them understand role of the school board, role of superintendent. So the role of the board is basically policy, teacher negotiations, and safe schooling. And then, yeah, we have one employee, the superintendent. Superintendent runs the school district. So to get to the action items for tonight, I would like everybody who's here and watching at home to understand that the superintendent works to move the district forward, adjust to different changes, different laws, resignations, other factors in the best interest of the district. That is then brought to the board. So while there's lots of social media activity, it's a very understandably strong feelings in the community about the nurse position, music position, other topics, I'm sure that will come up. The board hasn't discussed this yet. We're gonna do that now. So I just hope that's helpful for people's understanding. I'm not looking for favor or disfavor, but the superintendent runs the district, it's the board's one employee, and these things that are gonna be discussed, really for the board, just a reminder to all of you, is that whatever your personal opinions are, in service of the board, you have to remain neutral, ask questions, be observant. But we're part of the grievance process. So something, if there's a grievance related to these topics, or ones that will come as we get ready for the next school year, those go to Russ, there's the superintendent, Russ, and then it comes to us. And we have to be, to an extent, set our opinions aside and be basically neutral and open-minded, so that we can, in non-public, hear those particular grievances, because that's our responsibility on the school board. So I hope that helps inform everybody of the structure that we adhere to, and that's what we're working with then. With that, hopefully helpful to everybody, I would like to get into the action items. So could I have a motion to accept the two teacher resignations, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the two teacher resignations.
Oh, second. Ed, second, and thank you. Any, I'll give a quick overview, so we know, and then encourage any comment on it. So we want to thank Danielle King for her years of service to Sunapee schools, the community, apparently moving to Wisconsin, and we wish her the absolute best with deep And then Melissa Young, we want to thank her as well for her six years here. Kind words for Walter as her leader as she's leaving. Apparently sold her house and is moving on to a new adventure. So a big thank you to Melissa Young, Danielle King, for their service to the Sunapee schools. So if the board wants to add comment, please do.
Thank you very much for your service.
Leaves can be awkward when it comes, oh, they're leaving. I'm from the camp, that you just say thank you very much, and in that moment, wish them the best. And be exciting to hear what they're up to and how they do. So they've served our community for a long time, and we're deeply appreciative.
I know, Grace is particularly fine in her fifth grade experience, so.
Yeah. All right, so thank you, thank you very, very much. All in favor of accepting the teacher resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. So I need a motion and a second to get to discussion. Do you want to speak to this before we, because I'm gonna just, I'm gonna follow, I'm following the train, this is how this works. I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed new nurse pre-K 12 position. You have a motion and a second, it goes to discussion, Russ can add color and background and figures and everything else. You have a motion to accept, to approve the proposed new nurse pre-K 12 position.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed new nurse pre-K 12 position.
Thank you, Ed. Do you have a second to move us to discussion?
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a different structure and a different approach. I would really appreciate it for the board and the community to go into the, into the details and explain it.
Yep. So first and foremost, being the superintendent of the school district, the responsibility of every child and every staff member falls in my lap, on my shoulders, and it's something that I take very, very seriously, and I do not take lightly whatsoever. We have done a lot in this district to ensure safety of our children, of our staff, we've done lots of training, we've been recognized for our emergency management and fairness. And so just know that I take that responsibility very seriously, and it does start and stop with me, and I am ultimately responsible, right, wrong, or different. My position, my proposal today, we currently have two positions of nurse in each building, one of the middle high school, one of the elementary school. The middle high school nurse put a letter of retirement in a year ago. One of my responsibilities to the taxpayers and citizens of this community is to look at where we can be efficient in our, in our budget process, and also where we can be efficient on how to service our kids, and if any of our kids need to be met. The proposal I'm going to put up front of you today, I feel, will be able to provide the same level of medical support for our students and staff that is required by educational law and also fulfills your school board policy. My recommendation tonight, or my proposal to you tonight, is that by eliminating the two individual school nurses, that we hire one district-level nurse, and we hire two people in each building to support that nurse when that nurse is not in the building. I give you a packet of the responsibilities that a nurse can delegate, and someone that does not have a certification can do regarding whether it's handing out specific medication under a nurse's direction in a supervised plan, whether it's giving insulin, we currently have paraprofessionals in our building that give insulin. We have paraprofessionals in our building that we have had wilderness EMT trained to ride with students on buses to prevent them from asphyxiation and choking. We have folks on staff that are trained to give EpiPens, and the majority of our staff has been certified in CPR and first aid. And unfortunately, that is the minimum level that you're required by law to provide in your building. Now, I don't think that's an acceptable level, which is why I'm proposing that we hire, try to go for a registered nurse and have a registered nurse in that position. But in that position, having that person be able to go between two buildings and have support on either side will allow us to provide that same level of care that I talked about to our students. I think one of the pieces that we need to look at, again, something coming out of COVID that we didn't ever think about before, is telehealth. And so one of the things that we put a person to support the nurse that couldn't do is diagnose. They don't have the proper training to diagnose potentially a concussion, somebody that might have a broken arm. I mean, you might be able to recognize it's a broken arm, but you can't diagnose that. A nurse would need to do that. So if a nurse, I heard somebody say, I think it was a three-minute ride, or it's a point six tenths of a mile, we would have systems in place that would allow communication for the nurse, depending on where they are, to come to if need be and provide that, that treatment, if you will, or that overview of what might be wrong with them. But in COVID, we've all done now telehealth. And so we're looking at a way that we can actually set up telehealth stations in our nurses to have an online, totally active ability to communicate back and forth with a nurse which is not in the building. And so I think we are, again, looking for ways to become efficient. I think there are, the other piece, that I think is important, is that right now, in emergency management plans, all our teachers are required to give first aid and CPR right there training, and to assist kids that need medical attention. And so right now, we all are part of that responsibility. Yes, our nurses right now have a responsibility in our buildings. It's been a long year with COVID, I'm glad we have them in our buildings for this time period. But moving forward, I think we can be more efficient, and again, offer the same level of support to our students and to our staff members, going to this model of a K-12 nurse with two support people in place and a plan and communication going back and forth. Part of the plan would be giving additional days for the nurse that was hired to come on to work in the summertime, to help the bill develop these plans and systems, and to make sure that they're involved in the hiring of the two people that would be supportive in those positions, and have them do some training that's needed over the summer as well. Again, right now, we have parazet give insulin, we have parazet ride buses, we have parazet Uepens. We can train people to do the things we need to do, though, and I want to make sure that when we pass, if we pass this position, that we have time over some time to put those systems in place. So that's the overview or outline of the new position.
Questions or comments from the board?
How long have we had a nurse at school?
I can only say as long as I've been here. So that's a good question, if I can expand on it. There are lots of other districts in the state that don't have nurses in their buildings full-time. Dr. Houston shared with me in his, two schools ago, they have a nurse that came to the building a half a day, not a whole week, a half a day, and it was up to building principal to dismiss with medication indoor to work with the kids that needed a medical system. There are districts in the state right now that use the current model that I'm presenting to you as well.
What steps are you gonna take to, if this passes tonight, over the next year, to monitor the pros and cons of it? So in a year from now, if it was to pass, we can look at it safe for these reasons, we find that this worked, it was appropriate, no issues, versus these are some of the issues that needs to be addressed in the future years if it had to go back.
So I think like anything, that we would have an ongoing assessment with the new program, take feedback, hear from parents, hear from the kids, hear from staff, hear from the folks involved in the program. And whether we need to potentially even make a change mid-shifts, again, that level of responsibility to keep your kids safe still lies with me. And if I felt we got through after the year, we weren't able to do that effectively and efficiently, as I feel we can, then I would have to come back to you and say, I think we need to go do this, and find the money in the budget to be able to do that. Yeah, I don't think I would need to do that, but I certainly would jeopardize our kid's future, excuse me, jeopardize our kid's safety if something wasn't working at all. So we, an ongoing evaluation system that we obviously could talk about during budget season, and then talk about next year, potentially at this time as well. But that would be an ongoing process for me to ensure safety.
So we're hiring two people to assist. Wouldn't it make more sense to do one LPN, one RN?
So there are some, there are some issues when we get into certification. By hiring two people, we feel we can look at people that are on staff right now that have certification of CPR and first aid, that protection may have had to be reduced, and maybe we'll keep them whole without adding any additional costs necessarily to those lives.
We currently already have one nurse, right?
We have three nurses.
Right, but we have one that's not retired.
No, that position has been, those positions have, will be retired.
So I'll be honest with you, I have some concerns about this, especially during COVID. I'm sure that the nurses have been very busy this year, but we had a child in the school that the nurse didn't happen to be in that day, and had an allergic reaction, and thank God my wife works right down the street. So I'm not a big advocate for not having a school nurse on, on staff at both buildings, because that could have been a disaster. If my wife didn't work right down the street, who knows what could have happened.
So there are certainly systems, as I said, that need to be in place, and redundancies that need to be in place. And unfortunately, that system, that system didn't have the redundancy that it needed, and that did fail. But there could be a day that a nurse is out, and our nurses are out of our building that we can't find substitute nurses, that people have to step in and provide those services. And so I don't, I don't disagree with any of that unfortunate, that was an unfortunate situation, but we need to, as we try to do every day, is put systems in place to ensure the safety of our kids and our staff.
So, I mean, I'm assuming this is done for, you know, budgetary purposes, but how much money are we actually gonna save?
I don't, I couldn't tell you the number without knowing what it all looks like when it all flushes out.
Yeah, that would be a hard, it's hard for me to make a decision not knowing if we're gonna actually save any money or not, not having a nurse in the school. You know, that, that's a big what-if, in my opinion.
Again, I think there are budgetary reasons, but I think there's efficiency. And I think the plan I'm posing in front of you makes us very efficient, and does not drop the level of care, leaves it where it's at.
What's the, the time sensitivity of this? And I ask because I think there's a lot of information, you know, that I'm just hearing and seeing tonight for the first time. And I mean, I share Andy's concerns about COVID, especially, I mean, it's, it's all time high right now locally, I mean, we're still battling it. And so, you know, how time-sensitive is this? Because I just feel like I either don't have enough information yet, or I haven't had enough time to absorb it.
So I think it's very time-sensitive, where we are recommending teachers right now, so no nurses put in that budget, excuse me, into the, into, I think that you're nominating in the next action item. We need time to go hire this nurse, we need time to advertise, we need to get this in place, and have systems put in place. Let me speak to COVID for a minute, because I think, yes, we all have coming off this for the last, you know, 14, 15 months. The governor of the state has come out and said, you're all going back to school. And people said, well, we can't do it, we can't fit on a bus. No, three feet, that's not a mandate. Wearing a mask, that's not gonna be a mandate. So trending towards, yes, our numbers are up, population being more and more vaccinated, things are going back to normal come next school year, as they're going back to normal for lots of school districts come April 19th, as mandated by the governor. The governor yesterday said, I'm not concerned about if you can keep three feet apart on a bus. Remember, we started at six feet, went to three feet, and now we're at no feet. So do I think COVID will still be buzzing around? Sure. Do I think it'll have the impact that it's had on us this year? I don't. And I think we have our systems in place to be able to deal with COVID very effectively. And whether that's having a nurse in each building, or having, again, a support system to recognize what needs to happen. And whether that's having a nurse in each building or having, again, a support system to recognize what needs to happen. Because we're not diagnosing kids with COVID either. We're saying they're symptomatic, you have to go home. Because we don't have that level of expertise to say you have COVID.
Can you speak to, in this model, the amount of time the nurses would be teaching? I've heard comments that our nurses aren't often available because they're teaching. But I don't, I don't know the nuances of that, so I don't want to misspeak.
Our high school nurse is in the building all day, but she does teach one or two classes depending on the year and the semester. And, and when that happens, the administration has a redundancy of systems set up so that people know that if they're coming down for medication, where they're gonna need medication from, if they need a band-aid. If she needs to be, gets available, someone will go leave her to class and she can come back. I know this is hard for people because we're talking about the safety and security of, of kids. But we can't, there's a lot of what ifs. And we go to school every year, we've been doing this for thirty five years. And we plan for the what ifs, and a lot of the what ifs, it's not most of the what ifs don't happen. We do emergency management, yes, they are six minutes down the road. We do have a nurse down the road. We have a lot of people first aid and CPR trained, um, in our buildings who go out on fields every day and I coach our athletes with concussions and broken arms and cramping ankles and puncture, you know, there's lots of things that happen in our schools all the time when we deal with. I'm not, I'm not deteriorating or taking away from the position of a nurse. Again, I think we can be efficient, offer that same level of care for our kids and staff.
So I, um, I guess I have a little bit less of a concern than Andy and Scott do. Um, only because I was trying to think about like all the different scenarios and situations. Like what are the things that are gonna happen day to day that truly need a nurse present? And again, not trying to be dismissive because I think it's a hugely important role. But are most of the things that happen in a school setting are those things that can be attended to with properly trained support staff that are, you know, CPR, first aid, that kind of thing? And then also thinking through like, I feel like there's probably enough situations where there's never a nurse present. We don't have a nurse present for any of our extracurricular activities. We don't have a nurse present for any field trips that are taken. And then there, of course, there's absences too. So, you know, just trying to consider all of those factors in terms of like, what is like, is really, really important. I, I think from a practical standpoint and a budgetary standpoint, if it makes sense to do this, then I think that's certainly, certainly worthy of consideration. If it's a wash, I might have a different opinion. So I do think that that is an important piece to making that decision. But, um, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess I just kind of struggle to think that if, if it was critical and vital to every situation as it exists, then we would have nurses present at all of our extracurriculars, on the buses going to field trips. I'd probably even have a nurse hovering around me at my house. But, you know, I, I would say that probably most of the teachers are arguably more qualified than I am as a parent to tend to emergent situations. And if something is absolutely emergent, it's a nine on one, no matter whether there's a nurse present or not. So that's, you know, I'm just trying to weigh through all the different scenarios and things that could possibly happen and how much risk we're really taking. And I feel if this was modeled really well and it makes sense from a budget standpoint to do it, and we have clearly defined goals and responsibilities for the supports, the training that's robust and, you know, clearly laid out as to what they can do, what, what should be delegated to them as their responsibility versus the nurse and how they flow between the two buildings, I think it would be a reasonable solution.
Yeah, I, uh, we have to look at what other districts our size do, what's sustainable, where stewards of tax dollars, we have to keep the kids safe. So from the board perspective of, um, trying to look for a proposed change and having the combination of the telehealth, trained, multiple resources, it's different. So by, that by itself is gonna make people uncomfortable. But I think this is one of those small steps we can make as a district where we consider if there's a high likelihood of some cost savings and there isn't a change in care, that we borrow what some other districts are doing and try the model and it does come back to Russ's job and his role for the district that if it's not clearly coming together this summer, we're gonna have an emergency board meeting and go in a different direction. So from that perspective as a board member as well, it's trusting the research of our, our one employee, understanding the comparison to other, other districts and understanding how that some people are incredibly pissed and uncomfortable with this. But we have to move our district forward and it's my understanding districts our size don't often have two nurses in two buildings. If there's a way to sustain that care, I'm open to looking at this model and trying to set it up. This summer, if it doesn't come together to the level of your confidence and will, then we're gonna be having a very brisk conversation for a different direction. So I, I, I feel initial risk is low because there's time to set this up to get it running, borrow from other districts and go, and we'll get updates on it. So I'm not making light of the change to people who are ferociously upset or nervous. From my board role, I think that this is, this is, has potential to go forward with, and so I'm supportive of it.
I guess my biggest question is, I didn't really get an answer on is, is this actually gonna save us any money? We were replacing, we were hiring five people to replace one person. So I mean, what, what is it, what are we looking at for savings?
So I'm gonna speak in a general term. Typically, an employee, full-time status, teacher with benefits is over a hundred thousand dollars. It's just a gen- what that looks like when everybody else is on board, I don't know. So I can tell you what a general teacher with benefits, full benefits, looks like is over a hundred thousand.
The support roles too.
Well, what are the?
So I was gonna say the support roles, I presume that they would not be full-time and full-time. You're not hiring two brand new full-time people, right?
Again, we feel that the support roles will have to interview, but we may have folks on staff who are already here that will potentially, been going to a half-time position, who are already at full-time, who already have benefits in place that will be able to match up, keep them whole without any additional expense.
Wendy and I talked about it, for me, that's appealing, that there's staff in the elementary school that may have a different, be coming off of a full-time role.
Staff in the district.
And staff in the district. If there isn't a demand for the full-time services and they have those certifications and they stay at their full-time salary and fill this role, if the nurse interviews them and it all works out, instead of bringing an additional resource into the, the district, I'm personally in favor if they have certifications and can fill this role and be a known presence in the community, be a known presence in the district, then we're able to offer the, the care and that person maintains their full-time status with a good chunk of the role being what they used to do with less demand and now this new demand. I'm in favor of people being able to, if they're the right fit and they have the right certifications, stay full-time employees and continue serving the district in a different way. That's the ideal coming out of this, that those roles could be filled by staff that are already working for us.
So we're reducing somewhere else to make room for? I, I don't understand how we're gonna take somebody that's already working for the district and add a half-time job.
Sure, let me, let me stop, okay. So next month, you're going to go through, I'm gonna give you a list of employees that I have to work for the district. Paraprofessionals, pedestrians, food service, bus drivers, right, administrative assistants. There are folks that we hired this year to assist us with COVID and some other areas in those categories that we may not have the need for next year to keep them at full-time. So if we can take one of those people that we potentially may have to put back at half-time and match them up potentially with this other position, we keep them at full-time without adding additional expenses.